Good morning. Welcome to the special meeting of the Newark Municipal Council on Thursday, August 28th. In accordance with New Jersey law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided to The Star-Ledger, The Jersey Journal, and the public at large establishing the date, time, and location of this meeting. In addition, the agenda for this meeting was disseminated on August 27th at the time of preparation imposed on the website of the City of Newark. Roll call?
Council absent Gonzalez.
Here.
Kelly absent Quintana.
Litens.
Ramos.
Here.
Scott Roundtree.
Yes.
Silva absent President Crump.
Present.
Council President, council members, we are on page four of the special meeting. Item 7R4AS is confirming bond sales.
Can we get, uh, Ben?
Good morning, council members. Benjamin Guzman, Acting Finance Director. This resolution is to authorize the sale of bond anticipation notes. The city currently has outstanding bond anticipation notes that will mature at the end of September, and this is to authorize the sale of the new bonds so we could roll over these notes. There is some principal pay down on the existing notes. Those will be paid out along with the required interest payments, and then these will be sold to roll them over for an additional year.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Hearing done. Roll call?
Council absent Gonzalez.
Yes.
Kelly absent Quintana.
Yes.
Ramos.
Yes.
Scott Roundtree.
Yes.
Silva absent President Crump.
Yes.
7R6AS and 7RB, I'm sorry, 7R6AS and 7R6BS are both dealing with transitional aid. A is to rescind the resolution, and B is to authorize the transitional aid loan agreement as amended and to provide for additional loan support for 2025.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. BA?
Good morning, Council President. Council members.
Morning.
Eric Pennington, Business Administrator. Both of these documents are connected. The first one is to rescind last year's funds that we received from the state, from the Transitional Aid Fund, but to be clear, we are not under the auspices of transitional aid. This year, we are getting an additional $30 million from the state with respect to the city's budgetary needs, and the $22 million that we received last year will be, the payments will be deferred until 2027. So we have to rescind last year's agreement and incorporate that into this year's agreement to close our budget gap.
Thank you. Any questions from the councilmen? Gonzalez?
What's the payment period for the two loans?
The $22 million loan, the payment terms are deferred until 2027, payable over five years at 0% interest. The $30 million loans is essentially a six-month bridge loan that will be due next year in March. We expect that we will renegotiate that toward the end of that time.
Yeah. The other thing is, let's see, we have--
It's also 0%. I forgot to say. I'm sorry.
We had a shortfall of 22 million last year. We had a shortfall of 30 million this year. What is anticipated shortfall coming, or what we are doing to avoid a shortfall in the years to come?
Great question. The principal basis for the shortfalls is because we have not had a revow in a significant long period of time, and that our ratio has dropped significantly from two years ago in the 80s to 90% range, down to less than 50%, which means that the sales of our houses, which is a good thing, have increased just proportionally to the assessed values of the properties. So we are now required to pay an additional amount to the counties to adjust for that, uh, the ratio and the property valuation. That will continue next year, and so we have to take some austerity measures to make sure that we address that because we have at least one more year we'll have that ratio deficiency as well. We have implemented, as I'm sure you know, a hiring freeze and a salary increase freeze other than collective bargaining agreement mandated increases. That has had a positive impact. We expect that that will continue next year. We expect that the departments are going to have to face some reductions in what it is they can do going forward. Not a blanket across-the-board reduction. It'll be more surgical.
In terms of the, say, the difference in the rates, that affects how much money we have to, let's say, to rebate to, let's say, to people that challenge the tax assessment. How much has that been in the, say, the last two years? How much money have we had to pay back to the taxpayers for, let's say, for when they challenged their rates?
It's a, it's a twofold answer. One, I don't have the specific numbers for you, and I can get that to you, but what we often do is--
Deferred?
Deferred for, and, well, not, I don't say deferred. We give credits rather than an actual refund. So I guess you could say defer as it moves forward, and that is our typical approach, is try to give credits moving forward rather than make repayments. But I can get that information to you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Councilman Ramos.
Yeah. Eric, the equalization issue, the amount that was included in last year's budget was how much?
The deficiency, $22 million.
Okay, and this year is approximately the same?
No, it's about $30 million this year.
About $30 million. Okay, so the loan covers essentially the--
Yes.
--gap that's created by this equalization issue.
That's right. That's its intended purpose.
And when do you anticipate the revow process to be completed?
Fourth quarter '26, first quarter '27, probably, being conservative, the first quarter '27.
So the '27 budget should not be impacted by this equalization issue--
That's correct.
--based on the projection.
That's right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Hearing done. Roll call?
Council?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Kelly absent. Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Scott Roundtree?
Yes.
Silva absent President Crump.
Yes.
7R8AS is the introduction of the 2025 annual municipal budget, and a public hearing will be held after September 24th, 2025.
Mr. BA?
Good morning again, Eric Pennington, Business Administrator, Council President, Council members. The administration presents to the council the introduction of this year's budget in the amount of $970,180,790.27. Sort of as a preamble, I want to suggest that a, this budget really has a threefold purpose. The first of which is to minimize the tax increases of the residents who are already faced with overburdened fiscal responsibilities and deficits in their lives elsewhere, and we do not want to make it any worse than it is, and certainly want to keep it at a level that is manageable. The second thing I would say is we want to maintain the services that we provide here in the city and indeed improve them as we've started to do in DPW, which is on a lot of people's minds with respect to sanitation, collection, and recycling. And the third thing is to avoid furloughs and layoffs, which we've been able to accomplish, and we expect that we'll be able to continue doing that. Any cuts in employment, we expect will come through attrition and just minimizing the hiring. Bearing that in mind, we will continue to make sure that we have adequate staff in critical areas and particularly pay attention to revenue-generating areas, which we need to pay attention to, and make sure that we can increase the revenue to the city's FISC without increasing the taxes.
Thank you. Councilman Ramos?
Do we have a schedule yet for the hearings, Madam Clerk, or not yet?
Not yet.
No, not yet. No.
So your revenue numbers that you're projecting in this budget, you know, being that we're close to September already, you have a good sense as to whether or not, you know, your projections are on target or they're off?
They're on target with the adjustments that we have. I mean, there's, you should have a tax analysis sheet that indicates that there is a, you know, increase in the rate, and with that increase in the rate and the austerity measures that we have taken, we expect to be right on target and also in line with the funds that we're getting from the state as well. So yes.
So did the estimated tax rate that went out, does that mirror the rate that's included in the budget we're introducing, or is there a difference?
There's a difference. It's fairly close, but there is a slight difference.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President. Councilman Ramos?
Councilman Gonzalez?
I mean, Gonzalez, I'm sorry. I'm looking at myself.
We look alike.
My fault.
Have a little more hair.
Someone has hair.
I'm younger.
Councilman Gonzalez, you owe Councilman Ramos a lot of credit. I'm sure he's thanking--
I'm younger than him.
I'm drinking my coffee.
I see that the tax rate on the city side went up like 9%. That's unprecedented. I believe that in previous years, we have had a 2% increase, 3% increase. This year is, if we take 19, .199 divided by the 2.135, it's .09% or 9%. Let's see, how are we going to justify to the residents of the City of Newark an increase of 9% in the taxes? The city portion of the taxes, because the school is not that much, and the county actually has a reduction. So I would love to hear from you, let's say, how, how is it that we're going to, and how we went around the 2% increase that the statute, let's say, recommends, the state statute recommends or allows 2%, and we are increasing it 9%?
Well, that is a good question, as Ms. Bay points out. The, um, I guess the, there's not a short answer. There's a long answer, but I'm going to try to consolidate as best I can. The overall tax increase, when you can include the municipal levy, the Board of Education, and the county tax rate, is more in line with about 5%, 5.5%. We have, under Mayor Baraka's direction, worked diligently to keep the tax rate low, and as you point out, it's been no more than a 3% increase over the last seven or eight years. When our increases are so low and costs increase, there's a gap somewhere, and at some point, there has to be an adjustment that catches up with that gap. We're at a point right now where we have still managed to maintain less than a double-digit increase, where other urban centers and neighboring municipalities have had double-digit increases, 13, 11, 12%, and we have not done so. That's their overall rate, not just their municipal levy. So even though you point out the municipal levy is more than it has been in recent times, if you look at what we've done over the years, the average increase is still comparable or much, much better than other municipalities have done, and we're faced with the significant challenges. But as I indicated at the outset, you know, we have a threefold objective here. That is to keep that tax rate as low as possible and still provide the services that these residents deserve and make sure that we don't lay off people or furlough them. We could certainly do that. We don't think that's what we should do. Once this is introduced, and we presume you will introduce it, you'll have an opportunity to look at it yourself and make suggestions. I would implore you not to try to reduce it to the point where we have to have any layoffs or furloughs, and I'm sure that, I'm sure that that's something that you will look at as well and likely would not do, and that's why we are at the rate where we are. But it is to make sure that we have the best overall rate that we possibly can while maintaining the status quo as best we can.
Yeah, Mr. BA, talking about services.
Yes, sir.
The garbage collection.
Yes, sir.
Has been, let's say, horrendous, especially the recycling. The carton recycling more than the glass recycling. What are we doing to improve that service? Because that's one of the most visible services that we have, that police and fire, that determines more or less how people, let's see, rate the city in terms of services, and we are failing in some of those. So what are we doing?
Thank you for that question. You may, perhaps you recall when I first got up here, I acknowledged that that was one of the areas that was a challenge and has an issue that we have to address. I'm not hiding behind, you know, any rock to suggest that we don't have more work to do to address that area, and we do. So we have, as you know, we have a new interim director of DPW to implement changes to improve the collection of, as you say, particularly recycling, of a sanitation as well. I think, based on the data that we get from our 4311 call center, that quite frankly, the complaints have gone down. I wish Councilman Silver were here. I get more daily, uh, issues in the east ward than anywhere else. Those have decreased as well. And this is over the last 30 days, just over the last 30 days. So it is insufficient to say that we are where we need to be, but I think that there's sufficient data to suggest that we are headed in the right direction. When I talked about earlier, making sure that the reduction in staff would be through attrition, that doesn't apply to DPW. DPW still has the opportunity to hire as necessary. There's also a plan in place right now. The unions have been notified that all staff in every area of DPW, which includes building service workers, laborers, people who are in Miller One, who take care of the outside parks and grounds and corridors, all of them are subject to be reassigned to make sure that we have sufficient people in the areas of most significance. That includes recycling and sanitation collection. Some of the building service workers here in City Hall have already been put on notice that they are being reassigned. That's my understanding. Some of you have got a letter from some of the disgruntled employees who I've spoken to about why that's happening, but you have raised the issue, I think, more clearly than anybody else as to why that is happening, and we will continue to do so. We will look at areas of critical need, and we will, within the confines of the collective bargaining agreement, make adjustments that this administration believes are necessary, particularly based on feedback that you give us directly and from your constituents to make sure that we do provide the services that you've talked about.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. President?
Councilman Ramos?
Yeah, and we don't need to delve into a lot of detail today, but as we get through the hearings, you know, I'm just interested in hearing from the administration about, you know, what's driving the increases. I know in a lot of municipalities, different levels of county government, the increases in health benefits costs attributed to the state health benefits plan is driving up, you know, cost. I know the administration settled a number of contracts last year, so I would imagine that, you know, on the salary and wages side, that's going to drive up some of the costs because you have contracts that have been settled, whether it's across-the-board raises, additional steps that employees may be eligible for. So I'm also curious to see where some of the revenue projections off, you know, which is attributing to the gap, are losses in federal funding impacting the city's ability to, you know, balance its budget essentially, because some of the offsets and grant losses may have to be made up with city funds at this point. So, you know, just information for you and your team as we get ready for the hearings.
Yeah, your observations are spot on. Although with federal grants, we have not realized as significant a decrease as we anticipated this year, but we do expect more next year. But you hit the nail on the head with the largest two drivers of what the, has caused the increase. One is healthcare costs. Even though we are not in the state health benefit plan and have benefited from that, our benefit has been realized in less of an increase, not a decrease. So we have cut the gap as what the increase would be substantially based on not being in the health benefit plan and going to the reference-based pricing where that option is available, and we expect that more people will sign on the reference-based pricing and will save us more money. The other is that we have negotiated almost all the contracts last year. There are about two or three that are still left. The Norfolk Fire Officers Union is still out. Nurses are still out. I think there's one other. So there's three, three contracts that I'm working on right now. But the average angle increase over the term of those contracts, which are either three, four, or five years, has been 2 and 1/4% increases average across all of them, and we think we've done a fairly good job with that, but we have to pay them. You know, the cost of living goes up. The employees deserve to have some increase, and they've gotten it. I will note that management has not gotten an increase, and we have been aware that some of that burden falls on us, and we have to take that responsibility. I will look at that in next year's budget. We'll see where that stands, but I don't anticipate there would be any retroactive increases for management, as there were with the collective, with the rank and file, who have collective bargaining agreements. But your points are all well taken. We'll have more detail as the hearings go forward.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, Councilman. I kind of agree with Councilman Ramos. It'd be nice if we can maybe get a one-pager that may show--
Council President Crump, I have to say, I can't hear you.
Can't hear me? I'm sorry. Is that, oh, okay. Please, everybody in the gallery so that we can talk amongst ourselves and we can hear each other. With regards to a possibility, not possibility, can we get maybe a one-pager of what the significant increases in costs or expenses were from 2024 to 2025, as well as some of the grants or revenues, revenue that we did not receive in 2024 versus 2025, so we can kind of get a little comparison? I think that would help us with our analysis, too.
We could certainly do that, and I will, but as I just indicated, the grant differential has not materialized to be as detrimental as, quite frankly, I thought it would be. We're not, we're not there yet all the way, and there are certainly rumors and threats of callbacks. So there's still that possibility. I'll get that information to you, but I don't expect that you'll see any significant--
Any significant, okay. That's fine.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman, council?
BA, so we talk about other variables that help to drive what it is that we have to do as a municipality. The back end of stuff, whatever the fragrance is around grant generation, I know that's not one end of it, but I think on our end, our particular focus and need has to be around areas in the city that create revenue opportunities. One, and then assessing the benefits of us being able to extend our helping services to entities that are supposed to be helping to drive revenue in the city by way of commerce and all these other things that are not happening, to begin to scope out and look at what they're doing budgetarily by means of what the city is providing and giving, and to begin to possibly, if those goals or, you know, data points not being reached, to be able to, you know, pull back and assess on that. But we really have to have a laser beam focused on entities-- But we really have to have a laser beam focused on entities that we control in terms of driving and delivering, you know, revenue in the city.
Yes, thank you, Councilman, Council. To to that point as well, the areas where we have an opportunity to drive revenue, actually, they're few and far between, but but they are real. And there are opportunities for us, particularly in our pilots, making sure that the those are payments in lieu of taxes, that they're all compliant, that we audit the information that we get from them so that we make sure that the ultimate revenue that we get is is accurate and appropriate. Special taxes, we have payroll taxes, parking taxes, let's see, payroll taxes, parking taxes, and a few other special taxes with respect to. Somebody just said hotel taxes, and they're right, but the hotel taxes don't come to the city. The hotel taxes essentially are passed through to the convention bureaus. That's why I didn't mention them. But but you are are right, the audience, that that is another special tax. The the payroll taxes, we are working with the state right now to make sure that we can cross-reference the data that we have with the data that they get. They have a much better system of getting accurate information from companies who have employees that have to have payroll taxes. Ours is a self-reporting, sort of an honor system here in the city of Newark. We're going to check the self-reporting and the the honesty of those with the state they agreed to work with us to cross-reference that data. And we are putting together an MOU right now. Those are the types of things that we need to do to make sure that we maximize our revenue opportunities, and we'll do so. And I certainly look to you to make more suggestions, and we will accept them and incorporate them.
Anything else, Councilman, Council?
No.
Councilman Gonzalez.
Let me follow up on that payroll tax because we have been working with the state to try to reconcile the the tax, the tax return that are submitted here with the quarterly reports that are submitted to the state. And we have been trying to do that for some years now, and we haven't been successful in in getting the state to cooperate. Are we getting any closer to them cooperating?
Yes, I've had discussions with the treasurer, with the governor's office, his senior advisor, who is responsible for budget and treasury liaison. We've had significant discussions with Ben Guzman and Rita Jordan, where we have gone back and forth recently with commitments that will get the information that you're talking about. And they've actually been very, very responsive and supportive. So I'm grateful to the governor's office right now.
The other thing is, at one point in time, I think we had an exemption for people that had salaries of $2,500, I think it was, quarterly. I don't remember the number, but it was it was a low number. Those individuals were not required to pay the payroll tax because it was a minimum. Do we have an exemption or everybody has to pay no matter what the salaries are?
There are a couple of exemptions. One is if they're Newark residents, and their other is a de minimis number. And I don't recall what that number is as well.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Anything else, Council? Thank you, Mr. BA.
You're welcome.
Roll call.
Counsel?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Kelly absent. Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Scott Roundtree?
Yes.
Silva absent. President Trump?
Yes.
Communications. Item 8AS is an ordinance authorizing a special emergency appropriation. Councils are hold to advance and adopt this item on first reading as 6FA.
What is this? What is a special appropriation?
Yeah, I was going to ask somebody from the administration just to explain it, some of our contractual obligations.
Good morning, Council, Councilmember, Councilmember Benjamin Guzman, Acting Finance Director. Yes, this ordinance for the special emergency is for contractual obligations of severance liability, and this will give us the opportunity to be able to, by doing a special emergency, if need be, authorize special emergency notes, therefore bringing some alleviation to the city's budget and being able to account for that. So in essence, instead of having to budget the entire amount in a particular year's budget, we can spread it over a number of years. And if need be, we can sell special emergency notes to cover those costs and pay them over a five-year period.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Hearing none? Thank you, Mr. Roca.
Counsel?
Yes.
Gonzalez?
Yes.
Kelly absent. Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos?
Yes.
Scott Roundtree?
Yes.
Silva absent. President Trump?
Yes.
The ordinance adopted today on first reading will be advertised in accordance with law, and a public hearing will be held at the special meeting conference on September 9th or soon thereafter, as practical, in the council chamber. Public comment?
Yes.
We are in the 30-minute public comment portion of this meeting, where each speaker will have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record.
Alix Mohammed, good morning, senior citizen of Newark. Lisa, I want to apologize to you on behalf of Newark. You said that they didn't have a deficit, down there borrowing money, so it's a deficit. You said the taxes was increased almost 15%. Now it's 9%. And he's saying that's it might be more. So I want to apologize to you on behalf of Newark, New Jersey, because I know he don't have the class to get up to see, because he walks around like, you crazy. Ain't nothing crazy about you. I was coming here today just to watch the drawing. And what happened was, I was with Gail. Let me make this clear. I'm supporting Gail Chaneyfield for Central Ward in the special election. So let's make it clear. The reason why I'm supporting her, she don't even know. I lobbied her. I wasn't even talking to her. I went to Felicia and Lisa and said, could y'all tell Gail to run? Because I thought she was the best person. Before she even said, I lobbied her. She didn't know. But anyway, I know one thing, she won't abandon us like Monica did. And y'all was all here last year this time when I begged her, remember? I begged her to resign. Remember, I begged her? And she didn't. So a whole year, the senior citizens, the Central Ward, has had no representation. I begged her. But for political reasons, to get Larry in that seat, she resigned. Now, Gail also told me that she got a letter from the council president saying that if she go over minutes again, that she's going to be banned for one year. And when you look at that wall up there, I see Gail, I see Mildred, I see Maria Valenti, I see all these men. The woman did 15 years of service down here. Give her courtesy. If you don't, if you didn't interrupt her, she probably, instead of seven, she would have finished in six. But the but they're thin the most harsh. See, Larry, you becoming political because you want her to go over so she can't come down here and talk. Because that last conversation that she had, she had 30,000 views. That's political, bruh. Give her courtesy for the time that it was an insult when Sharp James came down here and y'all to let her speak. And the son was sitting there. I don't even want to talk about that. All the years that somebody come down here. If y'all didn't have a second job and y'all had to live off like Louise off of the salary, you'll see that ain't enough. I remember I spoke at the Board Education, and Don was the president, and I went over. It was about when Leon, when they was crying about his contract, and I went over and made it. And you know what she said? She had enough class. She said, I have to let him go over. He's my elder. She's your elder. She's your elder. She's your elder. Respect your elder, because I know you were taught that way. Waalaikum Assalam.
Thank you for your comments.
Good afternoon, Felicia Austin-Singelton. It feels good to be back in this building, but there's a lot of things I don't want to say. You were talking about the budget, and a a letter was sent out to say that the budget needed to be termed in 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 April. We're now here in September. The lack of services that's being provided to the residents is just unbelievable. And then you saying, we have to put a budget together. Well, I'm gonna tell you what to do. All the offices of the mayor of homeless prevention and Office of Violence Prevention need to be cut out. Needs to be cut out. It was the county's responsibility to place the homeless. The city decided to jump in, and now you got a mess, a mess in housing. In just the community is just broken. I cannot believe that we have representation, because you are advocates. You are advocates to sit up there and help the residents. And everyone up there know that I will come to you personally through email, text, or whatever, before I ever step foot to this mic and say anything about an issue. You know, months in advance. I've tried to work with you. I don't care what people say about you. I am here for the residents. But the lack of resources and incompetent people that we have in this city has to stop. That's why he's getting rid of the, he's trying to go third party. Newark Housing Authority is going third party is because y'all let Mitty take control, put Dashay Carter down there at the housing authority, and she hired incompetent people. The same thing that's happening here in this building. You got Kyra Watts over here ripping up people applications, talking to people nasty in homeless services. These are people that's going through stuff. It was okay when y'all sat up here and let your friends and family get get hired, and now everybody's in an uproar. Oh, Spicer is going third party. He should. It's just the good people that's there will get trapped up in the the no good nonsense that was there. Nobody had nothing to say when he hired incompetent people in there for $70,000, not showing up to work, not doing their job, not applying for the Ross Grant, not applying for the Norfolk Grant. They took money from the housing authority's budget that was supposed to go to residents to pay people in resident services, because they didn't do their jobs and apply for grants. And at the end of the day, you wonder why people are here mad? Y'all people woke up on me, sized me up. I'm not scared of none of y'all. God got me. I hope he has you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker.
Lisa Parker, good day, criminal cult that's running our government. I call y'all criminals because this word salad right here that y'all don't read, this is this is a translation of it. The city of Newark is facing a crisis, a fiscal crisis. When I came here and bought all of my flip charts and told you I pulled all the budgets from DCA last year, you was in a debt and a deficit. You got the Halo Building with a 25-year tax abatement. You got Smitty on my block that owes you $1.2 million in property taxes. You got another building on White Cliff that owes 862,000 in property taxes. Let me explain something to you. Last year, when you went up on our taxes, 7%, then you increased our taxes this year, 7.8%, that comes out to 15%, tagged on with the revaluation. Instead of y'all taxing the people that should be paying taxes, you saddling the debt with homeowners, small businesses, and this this BA here, you should be voting a no confidence in him as a BA because he has been fiscally and financially irresponsible for a budget. We didn't get a budget last year until October. And so let's talk, let's talk about and break this down, what he just did. You took out a loan for 22, 22 million. He's rescinding that and then adding another $30 million to that, of which you supposed to be paying off in 2029 to 2031. Why are you saddling my kids and my grandkids with this debt? Because y'all are irresponsible. The last council meeting, y'all approved an ordinance for the Riviera five deferments. Should have went back to the administration after the third one. 3.99 is $4 million over the next 10 years. That's $40 million. Where that money supposed to come from while you helping the Riviera renovate and do all kind of hocus pocus, and you ain't got no homeless dollars? That's criminal. That's irresponsible. And yet, the good working people in Society Hill can't get you the right legislation for a tax abatement extension.
Thank you for your comments.
Good morning, George Tillman, Jr.
Good morning.
I want to talk about the tax abatement moratorium that was supposed to be in effect on August 6th that was initiated by Councilman Gonzalez. And I want to appreciate you for, sir, for taking a stance like you said, because on August 13th, there was a tax abatement committee meeting that went forth without Councilman Gonzalez, who said that he was going to support the moratorium to make sure that Newark residents were protected and the administration would do what they have to do to come into compliance so that Newark residents are protected. We talk about this, this tax increase. We talk about all this money that is owed to the city. We look at these tax abatements. We we're giving away tax abatements to developers who owe 1.5 million dollars. We we have over $45 million in debt that's owed by these tax abatement, these tax abatements and these developers, but these taxes are going up. I'm very disappointed at you, Councilman, Council. I'm very disappointed at you, Councilman, Councilwoman Roundtree. You said that you was going to support Councilman Gonzalez because it was the right thing to do, because administration is not in compliance. Councilman, Council, I'm disappointed in you because you should have supported your council colleague who's supporting the Newark residents because the administration is non-compliant. So this is what we get when we get this Baraka team. We cannot have Baraka teams. We have to have people that represent the people. Because you were, you were, you were there to take a stance for the people, and you said that you were Councilwoman Roundtree, and I'm very disappointed. Because on August 6th, you said, I firmly stand for, stand for with Councilman Gonzalez and support the residents and what was right. And that was right, what he did. And Councilman, Council, it was wrong that you took the chair position, knowing that that the government is non-compliant. I asked you why you're doing it. You said Councilman Gonzalez has the right, and he has his opinion. No, he didn't have an opinion. He took a stance for Newark residents. He took a stance for the people. And now we have a process that has to continue with the government non-compliant. So we need some answers from you, Councilwoman Roundtree, because you said you was going to support it. And Councilman, Council, we need some answers to why you did not support it. And you a member of that tax abatement committee. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker. Seeing no one else, public speaking is now closed. Anything from the council?
Yes.
Councilwoman Scott Roundtree.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Mr. Tillman, for your remarks. The date that Councilman Gonzalez made that statement, and I want to first state this, everything I do and every position I take will always be for the people. There's many things I can bring to this microphone about the people not being in compliance with some of the things that they come to this mic. I'm not talking about any of the people that have spoken prior to you, but there's some things that I actually could speak to, not to Ms. Parker, not to Felicia, but since it's you, Mr. Tillman, that addressed me with disappointment, there's a lot of things that I don't state at this microphone because it's actually something that I have to deal with politically and professionally with the people of the city of Newark. Councilman Gonzalez made that statement. We were also in conversation with Councilman Quintana and Council President as pertaining to Lisa's request for relief for the residents. At the same time, when he made that statement, we were supporting him for the moratorium at that time, which we did state, that there were things that were already in the hopper, already things that were scheduled. He didn't come to that meeting. I don't know whether he'll be at the next meeting. I was on my way to the emergency room and called to that meeting, as you recall, and went to the hospital. I came to support the residents that were in there that had things already on the table. So when I'm called, my first position, just like this morning, being here for this budget, is to be here. I've never missed a council meeting. I've never I've never missed a committee meeting, and I will always be there to support the people. That is my first assignment. So I'm, you know, a little taken back because the truth of the matter is, I've always met with you. I've always brought people together for you. We're in the process of right now with the Law Department reviewing the process of this civil, I mean, of the affirmative action review council. That's what your issue was with being in compliance. So in reference to the abatement and in reference to the committee, I was called to the committee. The date was already scheduled. I showed up, and that's what I was supposed to do. So when you say support the moratorium, that was something he said here. The council that was here agreed to do whatever they want to do here that day. But going forward, when there's something on the table, I have to show up. I'm not going to boycott the meeting that I was requested to come to. So we can talk about this offline and go forward with the other concerns that you have regarding moratoriums and development and the meetings that you have with developers and trying to make sure residents get jobs and all of that. That's all right, because you're doing what you're supposed to do. And I'm doing what I've been elected to do and that is standing with my colleagues at the same time for the people and those who are building in this city. That was already on the table. So I just want to say, you said you were disappointed, and I get that, that's fine. And you're saying that I didn't stand with Councilman Gonzalez. You don't even know why he might not have come to the meeting. Okay, well, we didn't know why, sir, so I'm glad he had, well, I'm glad he told you.
Mr. Tillman, Mr. Tillman.
That's great.
No back and forth.
But you know what, sir?
No back and forth. Mr. Tillman. Mr. Tillman.
It's okay. What's even worse, I'm putting on the record, he didn't tell me why. So I showed up. Okay? And that's that. And we can talk about this after, if you care to. My office has always been open to you. My mind has always been open. And we can further have a communication about the committee, the review council, as well as the moratorium and the tax abatement committee, because I sit on it. Thank you so very much once again for your comments.
Thank you, Councilwoman Scott Roundtree. Real quick, I just want to say that for me personally, I've always been respectful when I'm up here, and I will continue to be respectful no matter how people treat me because that is the position that I've chosen and I've taken. And so I want to say that publicly. And for the record, the letter does not say that I would ban Councilwoman Janie Field Jenkins for the year. That's not in there. That's not. So with that being said, motion to adjourn.
Counsel?
Yes.
Gonzalez? Kelly absent. Quintana?
Yes.
Ramos absent. Scott Roundtree?
Yes.
Silva absent. President Trump?
Yes. See everybody next week.